Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible. Thank you all for coming this evening. Welcome. Returning Board Member Mike Donafio, new Board Member Terry Kruger, welcome. Please join me in a moment of silence as we remember Jennifer A. Sechakoviac, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Paul Wilson, a graduate and retired physical education teacher and coach of the district. Alan Henderson, former employee of the district. Florian Gentile, a graduate of the district. Thomas Hunt Jr., a former employee of the district. Steven Mouton, a former employee of the district. And Patrick J. Swoboda, a graduate, Board of Education member of the North Syracuse Thank you. Mike?
If I can, I just want to speak for a moment about Patrick. Patrick was a staple to this community. He did more for the school district and parents and friends of ours than most people that I know. I know for everyone around the table here, the past couple of weeks have been very difficult. And I know many of you out there, Patrick was a special part of your life as well. We'll never really be able to replace him here. I know, you know, it's been very difficult for me, losing one of my best friends, but I just think that we're all better people because of the way that he impacted our lives. And I just want to thank all of you for contributing to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next item on the agenda, presentations. Teacher, school nurse, teaching assistant, transportation personnel, and teacher aid appreciation days. Bear with me as I read a rather lengthy proclamation. Throughout history, teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides have had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their roles, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber, who have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Michael Schuess, the President of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the Board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare, May 8, 2018, Teacher Appreciation Day; May 9, 2018, School Nurse Appreciation Day; May 10, 2018, Transportation Personnel Appreciation Day; May 15, 2018, Teacher Assistant Appreciation Day; and May 22, 2018, Teacher Aid Appreciation Day, to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. We have a recommended Board action to declare those dates as appreciation days to be celebrated with appropriate activities. Is there a motion to declare those dates? Mr. Leon, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? And I assume we have some of these folks here this evening. All right, let's come forth. And then I'll go with you and we'll present the... Next presentation, the North Syracuse Education Foundation Grant Winners. Jackie.
I'm Jackie Forte. I'm the President of the North Syracuse Education Foundation. For those of you who don't know what we do, we are a nonprofit that exists in the district solely to support programs that aren't normally covered by the school budget. We submitted for all the Board members a PowerPoint presentation that you guys can review on your own time, and hopefully, the superintendent's going to help us get that possibly up on the web, so you can see some of the pictures of the grants in action. Since 2003, the North Syracuse Education Foundation has awarded 130 grants, and this year, we've gone over $150,000 in funding. This year, that includes 13 brand-new grants that totaled $12,473.75. We had approximately 24 people submit for about $35,000 worth of grants. We wish we could have funded them all. But we did do these 13, and we're going to get to those right now. So, up here with me today, I have Jen Murphy, who's one of our volunteers, Nat Ordway, who's our treasurer, Carolyn Gross, our secretary, and Maryite, one of our newest Board members. We also have in the audience, besides Kayla, any of our other student reps come tonight? Okay, we also have student reps, and we just want to thank everybody who does volunteer with the foundation. Everybody is a volunteer, and if anybody'd like to get more involved in what we do, we could really use your help. Currently, no one on our Board has a student who's actually going to school in the North Syracuse Central School District anymore. So, we'd love to bring on some new people to carry on this legacy. So Carolyn's going to read what each grant was titled, a little bit about it, and who won the grant, and then, if you're here tonight, a lot of the teachers could not make it because we had to change our original date. Please come up, because we have a certificate for you, and we'd like you to shake hands with everybody.
Our first grant is Right Brain Learning, and it was Maria Yakowick and Jen Harrington. They're from Bear Road Elementary. After an in-service and training, they decided they would like to implement this Right Brain Learning program to struggling readers in their general ed and special ed classroom together. And what we're purchasing for them are 220 Sightword Package, Struggling Learner Seminar DVD Series, and Right Brain Student Readers for first and second grade. Are they here? Come on up. Kim Lincoln-Hoker, is she here? All right. She did modeling pond river ecosystems. We're buying a 30-gallon complete ecosystem kit and a river accessory kit and basic aquarium plant and animal set. They're going to investigate changes in a variety of water quality parameters and how they impact aquatic organisms and ecosystem stability. I'm hoping that they will go to Scanny Atlas Lake and see if they can get rid of that algae bloom. Okay, the next two are Wendy Tracy and Jill Trubia. They are both from Main Street, which we do provide grants for Main Street. They did interactive adaptive books, so we're purchasing books for them. And it's an age-appropriate, engaging library of interactive adapted books that make it easier for students with disabilities and poor language skills to access literature. Jeremy Letchard, I don't think is here, is from CNS, differentiated seating and lighting in co-taught classroom. So, we purchased for him a variety of classroom, like high-backed chairs and Zenity balls and carpet and things to make his room friendly, classroom-friendly kind of thing. Lindsay Marzullo, I can hear it now, she's from Smith Road, kindergarten. We purchased 60 kids gear wireless headphones for iPad listening centers for all the five kindergarten classes at Smith Road. And apparently, their current headphones were not working so very well, and these are wireless, which would make it, they can work anywhere in the classroom, which is good. And the next one is Michelle Barone, I don't think is here. She's from Roxborough Elementary School. We bought materials to create five, to create five identical sets of breakout ed kits. It's a gaming experience that educators can use to engage learners and requires critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication. Mary Murdock is not here either. We did a learning nook for her, which is in her Spanish classroom, and it's a round thing, so that all these listeners can access their Spanish and do whatever. That's hers. And then we have Kathleen Spritzer. Now, Kathleen's at the junior high, and she, her title was Library Maker Space. So, we purchased Cuballett 20 Kit and Lego Mindstorm EV3. It's all robotic stuff for their robotics club. So, she's going to use that in her maker space, and so hopefully, the whole junior high will be able to share from that library situation. Our next group, I don't know if Alyssa Pompos is here? And Sue Kaiser and Eileen Osborne from Lakeshore. They had Empower Kids Through Movement. We bought, we purchased three different pieces of flexible seating, stand-up desk with a swinging foot, so kids who can stand and just move their feet when they can't stand still or sit still, and that's what we did for them. Lauren Corbischle Stuper, is she here? And Marie is not here. We purchased, they're both at, let's see, they're at Smith Road, and we purchased two Q-balls. Now, a Q-ball is a microphone that you can pass from person to person in a classroom, so that, like, if she's a quiet kid, which she isn't, it would be me who's the quiet kid, that speaker would project my voice, and that would make everybody sort of on an equal footing. So, that's what we purchased for them. And then, and Lindsey McVeigh and Sharon Knapp. Okay? Well, Shannon, I'm sorry. Shannon written down. They're from Gillette Road.
We'll fix it.
Oh, okay. All right. It's We Hear You Now, and they got three Q-ball wireless microphones, so they're doing the same thing at Gillette. Gillette, this is the first time Gillette has worked live, so we're very pleased. And the next one is Melissa Palmasato. Stand up. CNS High School. She also is getting flexible seating. Shapes the mind of the future. So, we're purchasing for her, again, stools, ball chairs, high-top tables, Adamant seating. We gave her an amount of money. She gave us a whole huge list of stuff she wanted, and we couldn't afford it all, so we said, "Here, we'll give you this much money, you take it and use it the best way you can."
Yeah, with your grant in particular, that's a huge thing with teachers right now. The research that they've been doing on grants. So, the people who gotten the grants for... Evan just said she had liked these tools. They've actually shown through evidence-based research, funding, including with their... Exactly how this is going to transform their class. So, that's how we kind of had to split. And with the larger grants, sometimes are sometimes doing a partial funding, which is And rather than telling her what she's... Not knowing what her priority is.
And our last person is Danielle Prevell. She's from Smith Road also. We had three grants from Smith Road. She's getting, we're getting a cart for her, like a pocket chart. She's in kindergarten, so that she can organize her whole reading program through that cart, and children can be able to pick out what they want.
It's for our regular grant cycle, the winners today. Last year, we had a teacher write a really... Cover every first grader. A larger scale. It goes up through a different approval process.
We have one from the junior high this year, which is also a robotic grant, and we said, "You can't do it the way you want to do it. Do it as a SAR grant, change it a little bit, that might be a possibility."
Yes, pretty much. And support our fundraiser coming up in November. And in November, our gala, more information.
I would just like to thank NSCF, not only for the grants for this evening, but for everything you've done over the years to help our students and to help close that gap with the things that we can't do. And several of the grants, as you said, have to do with collaborative learning spaces, and that is part of our vision and part of our mission work, so we're very pleased. I will make sure your PowerPoint gets put on the district website tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, next item, comments from the audience. John Cavulla?
All right.
Go.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the Board for the Teacher Appreciation Proclamation. I truly believe you do value our teachers, specialists, and support staff. I'm troubled by recent information shared nearly two weeks ago. It was noticed that the district will no longer be providing summer Regents Review Courses. The decision was made to have BOSIs take this on. The rationale, student success rates were low. Adding insult to injury, BOSIs would also be taking over our medical homebound instruction. The reason for this, a lack of instructors. I'm still fleshing out the data on the homebound. Point blank, these are bad decisions. It's bad for our students and bad for our community. Further, where this was reflected, where was this reflected in the many budget presentations we just went through? Our teachers know our kids, and we know our curriculum, and here's a few quotes from our instructors. "The kids were so motivated here, and it worked into the schedules of our students who were doing driver's ed and sports here. I loved helping the variety of the kiddos, the honored student who had goals for the better scores and earning cords, and kids who had to just pass the class. Only kink was how some students had to double-dip into other review classes. Other than that, we had a very successful summer." Another quote, "I had one kid enter my class who couldn't name a single nation involved in World War I. By the time the class was done, he could, and he passed the Regents. By moving this program to BOSIs, the district is limiting student options and opportunities. The flexibility to have access here at CNS in our own community should not be taken away from them. Further, students who didn't test will then fill our high school AIS courses. As for student success rates, all the success rates in the majority are 50% or greater. You have to keep in mind that the 50% may not sound like a stellar amount, but when you're talking about kids who did not pass this in 40 weeks, and they can come in in 14 days and still get a 50%, oftentimes with a second test with a double-digit 10% or greater, that's a really great statistic." The great irony here is, at the same time the teachers are recognized for their hard work, dedication, loyalty, our students and our work are being taken from us in place at BOSIs. We believe we are partners in this work, and as partners, we rally to support and pass a school budget, elect pro-student and pro-education school board members, rectify the difficult payroll schedule through an MOU, and are leading the fight to correct the district's multimillion-dollar penalty. Shifting work to BOSIs is not how you treat dedicated and loyal employees. I urge the Superintendent and the Board to reconsider this decision and allow our students to remain our students, because as it stands, they are all our students. Thank you.
Next item, Board of Education Committee reports or comments.
So, we're getting towards the end of the year, and we had one of our last Policy Committee meetings last Monday, May 14. It was a great meeting. We covered a lot of ground, and we reviewed, I think, 20 policies. We have 16 on tonight's agenda, and four were tabled for next month's meeting, which is June 11.
Anybody else? Erin?
Um, what, okay, Mary, I'll pull it over. Outstanding job by teachers, volunteers, the participants. Just an absolutely wonderful day. So, my hat goes off to everybody that made that day special and wonderful, and you can get an 83-year-old mother to sit there and give out ribbons for five hours in the sun, then you know it's a good event, so thank you for that.
Thank you. That's a great event. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Superintendent's comments.
Well, since we haven't met for a month, I have a few here, but I'll try to keep it brief, and it's all good, well, almost all good stuff. The first thing, I really need to thank the community for supporting the budget and passing the budget last week. So, I think that that really shows that the community as a whole really cares about our students, and we're excited about the opportunities and experiences that we'll be able to provide for them this coming year. The second thing I'd like to mention is where the mysterious new sign came from that's out front. We're pretty excited about that. And I want to thank Assemblyman Al Sterpi, because that was 100% funded by Bullet Aid that he was able to secure for us for the purpose of updating that sign. So, it should be up and running shortly. I also wanted to comment on the Special Olympics. I really, we've been doing this for years, and every year, it just gets better and better. I really have to say, I think this one was the best one yet, and it amazes me, we brought in over a thousand, close to 1,000 students this year. 14 different districts were representative, and it just went so smoothly. So, I would like to thank everyone who helped out, but especially the Special Olympics Committee led by Fina Santangelo, Lindsey Maloney, Becky Jones, Ann Malkowski, John June, Sarah Bambino, and Rachel McDermott. Just absolutely a spectacular job. Engineering Club, many of you know that we have a course at the high school where they work on a hydrogen fuel cell car, and what you may not know is, over April break, the CNS Engineering Club finished first in the urban concept hydrogen class in California. And all the funding for this comes from corporate sponsors fundraising. They, I've also been selected to compete in the Drivers' Championship in London, although it may be a stretch for us to figure out how to get them to London, but certainly a huge honor. And I have to mention that they compete against college-level students, so that is quite amazing. We have two family and consumer science teachers being honored. Denise Hartman is the recipient of a Teacher of the Year Award for New York State, and Heidi Hobbs in the Distinguished Servants Award, so congratulations to them. We have 126 CNS seniors who are getting ready for graduation, and when they graduate this year, they will be wearing royal blue leadership cords, because they completed the requirements of the Star Leadership Program. And this involves three years' worth of work in many topics, because we're on a tight time schedule tonight, I'm not going to read all of them. But they had to do community work, and through the work and the charities that they've worked with, they have donated thousands of dollars and made a difference in many, many, many organizations. So, great community work there as well. And last but not least, the big question on everyone's mind, and I said before I started this, almost all good things. The penalty, the status of our penalty, we are still working on that. We have managed to make contact and have conversation with real, live, high-level people in the governor's office, and we continue to work very closely with our legislators. Mr. Cavulla alluded to that a few minutes ago. The NSCA and NISIT have been very instrumental in helping out with this, too. We will continue to work on this and give you updates, and keep working towards either further reduced, or really, our overall goal is to get eliminated. We're going to be putting something out in the district dispatch that will lead you to a website or even a phone number that you will be able to call the district office to find out how you, in the community, can help with this. So, thank you.
Section 5, Routine Action Items. 5A, consideration of approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of April 16. B, consideration of classification and placement of disabled students certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, consideration of... C, consideration of classification and placement of preschool disabled students certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Ed. D, acknowledgement of business office reports for March 18. And E, consideration of contract awards. There are several in there. Sound system bid, automotive supplies, reach-in refrigerator bid, and HVAC filters. And the one that I want to note is the reach-in refrigerator where Gerhart's is the low bidder by 57 cents below the Joe Fleghan. So sometimes it pays to sharpen that pencil a little extra. So I entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, D, and E as a group. Mr. Harrington, Mr. Marizio, Alan Faitler. Approved. Discussion action items. Usually we have, like, A, B, C, D, and E. Tonight it goes all the way through U. V, actually. So hang, hang with us here. A, appointment of voting system specialist registrars and custodian of the voting machines for the May 15 annual budget vote and board member election. This would have been done before the vote, but we did cancel that meeting, so that will be done tonight. New York State School Boards Association Area Ford Director nomination. That is, the motion would be to nominate Andrew Rufo, who is currently the Area Ford Director, and authorize me to notify NISBA of that nomination. T, resolution to abolish and create instructional positions. Annette, or Jason, do you want to comment on those?
We're looking at each other. This is a lengthy list of kind of tweaking our teacher positions there that have to do with what changed in the budget based on staffing and the two additional teachers and the additional ELL teacher. They're, they're all listed. It's exactly what was included in the budget presentation.
E, recommendation to adjust substitute bus driver and substitute bus attendant rate of pay? E? Oh, Jason, you're going to, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify, as we had previously shared with the board, we, we had not made that adjustment to those rates in nearly 10 years, so it was time to re-norm those to increase the attractiveness of our district to potential candidates, so that, that's finally reflected here.
Thank you.
On the creation of the instructional, FTE, I think that... Is that the consultant teacher? Oh, no, it's the instructional coach. It's 1.0. It's the math position that was paid for previously by a grant that's now in the budget.
Yeah, existed. That 1.0 was missing.
Yeah, the computer must have got the best of us when we tapped. Thank you for catching that.
Thank you, Connie. Where was I? Yeah, E. Recommendation to abolish a 1.0 FTE account clerk 1 and create a 1.0 FTE account clerk 2 at the district office. Anything, Jason, to comment there?
No, just, we, any time that we have someone retire, we always do an evaluation of the duties and make sure everything is efficient as possible, and in so doing, we recognize the need to increase the title level of an account clerk to, so that it's uniform with the others, so that there can be cross-training and they can support one another's duties without having out-of-title work issues.
I would like to add, though, that there is a cost savings to the district due to the retirement.
There we go. G, resolution authorizing the settlement of the impartial hearing, which, again, would authorize Annette to sign all those documents to settle that impartial hearing. H, resolution authorizing a three-year service contract with OC and BOSI's for lit fiber, as opposed to unlit fiber, Don, I guess? I don't know. For high-speed communication services. I, resolution to enter into up to a 48-month service contract with OC and BOSI's for the replacement of print shop equipment. J, acknowledgement of gifts. Oh, my goodness. Here we go. North Syracuse Education Foundation donated a command caddy and a bunch of other stuff, valued at $252. Oh, these are the winners. I'm sorry. So we're just going to, Jackie's gone, we're just going to have the motion to accept all those with gratitude? Pardon me? Is there another one in there? I didn't see it. There we are, okay. CNS High School, North Syracuse Junior High Technology Department, we see the mini-grant, yeah, that's right, in the amount of $240 from Rochester Institute of Technology for the Project Lead the Way program at the North Syracuse Central School District. And, that is six different?
Six is a donor's choose.
Six is different as well, thank you. Roxborough Elementary School received the following item from Donors Choose. Again, a lengthy list, again, all appreciated, valued at $164.70 for part of it, $120 for the earphones, and $39.99 for the Play Beyond the Screen. I think we got all those. K, resolution to approve the principal lead evaluators, which will resolve that Dan Bolz, Dave Cardona, and that speech, and Don Wilczynski are the qualified lead evaluators. Rather lengthy, any comments there, Annette?
No, and I can, I can comment on K and L. You just read the names of the principal lead evaluators. We also have a lengthy list of administrators and consultant teachers that have been trained, and we do recalibration training according to our approved APPR plan with the state every year. And then every year at this time, we ask the board to approve the recommended names that I'm giving you to say that they have all received the proper training.
Teacher lead evaluators, again, a very lengthy list, and Annette has commented on those. AM surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment. Don, anything there that's... That's just, well, it's a nice machine. I can get back to where I belong here. There we go. And designated gift or the purchase of the new scoreboard at Michael Bagman Stadium from the Jeffrey Gates Foundation, $5,500 toward that scoreboard. I'm going to stop there.
Sir Schuster?
Shoot. Did I miss one?
I know that I've, I've been burned before pointing stuff out, but I believe we skipped item F, the payroll schedule?
Oh.
Yeah, I figured nobody get paid this year, so.
Problem.
Thank you, sir. Yes, I did. So the proposed 1819 payroll schedule is here for approval as well.
With special thanks to the union, the teachers union, for their flexibility in allowing us to have it put in place the way it is.
I need to do 6A, the appointment of all the voting machine people as a separate motion. Is, yeah, I do, yeah, trust me, I do. Anybody make their motion? Mary, second? Erin? All in favor? Opposed and one abstention, that's why, Connie. Abstention by Mike, that's why. So a motion then for B, where is this? B through N. Motion to approve items B through N as a group. Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Leone, all in favor. Okay, now the policies. Mary, we referred to those earlier. 12 of them are in, 16, that's right, 16 plus 1, I was thinking 12 plus 1. OP, Q, R, S, T, and U. Anything further, Mary, on those that we need to know? Just the result from the committee. Moving to your dock. Okay, motion to approve those? Ms. McDonald, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? There we go. Johnny Romano, a teaching assistant at Smith Road Elementary School, 24 years of service. Charles Elby, bus driver, two years. And Tracy Pierce, who retired with 13 years of service, and we wish them all the long healthy and happy retirement. Personnel reports, 7A instructional, 7B support staff, 7C administrative. Is there any need to go to executive session for any discussion there? Can we vote now? We can vote? All right, all, motion for ABC, 7ABC together? Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Leone, all in favor? Motion for executive session. Whoops, hold on.
I just want to make a comment in the administrative appointment, and I'd like to welcome Lisa Garofalo. She is here this evening. Welcome, Lisa, to our team. She's been appointed as the Director of Instructional Programming for Special Education, so we look forward to having her.
Welcome, Lisa. Now I can go. Thank you. Motion to move to executive session for the purpose of hearing a parental appeal of a superintendent's decision to receive an update on three legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment history of five individuals with action to follow on the parental appeals. Appeal, singular. Motion? Somebody? Mr. Leone, Ms. Scanlon? Oh, oh, I missed you. You have a question? You were trying to get a motion there.
Taking the motion.
Well, you're too late. You got to move faster, Mike. I know, I always look this way first, okay? Get used to it. Okay. All in favor? Okay, we're off to executive session. Okay, yeah.